All right, it is 6:15 and we will call the first city council meeting of 2023 to order. Happy New Year, everybody. And we will, let me get to my, where I need to be. All right, we will start with prayer and pledge led by Councilmember Harry. If you will stand with us, please.
Let us pray. Thank you, Lord, for gathering us here tonight to be together, to work to make our community a better place. Help us to listen to each other and address each other with respect. Thank you for this meeting and for giving us the opportunity to serve our community and serve you. Please give us wisdom, strength, peace and honor. In your holy name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I'm in pledge. I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we do the announcements, I would like to, to mention Stephen Fine lost his son earlier this week. And Stephen was very much a part of our, served as our mayor, served on our city council, and has been very, very much a part of this community. And his, his father, Pascal Fine, also was very much a part. And I know that they would appreciate our prayers and our thoughts. Joe, did anything you might want to add?
For those of you who don't know, Tyler Fine, Stephen's son, passed away this week. He had what he thought was a stomach bug. Went to the ER and found out he had the flu and he just got progressively worse. And Stephen wrote in a post on a Caring Bridge saying, he's left his body and he's joined the Lord. And I know that Stephen and his family are strong believers, but I also know they're hurting. So if you know them, please reach out and tell them that you love them. And if it's not today, in a few weeks, do it. Because there's no greater fear for a parent than to bury your child. And Tyler Fine was a fine, he was a, he was a fine young man, well named and well loved. And he was only 31. So thank you.
The other thing that Tyler did, and, and I know that Tammy had written about it, I think Katie T. did also. During Yuri, two years ago, he and his dad had a four-wheel Jeep. And they said, we can go places that nobody else can go. And the two of them together did that over and over and over. They spent two or three days there, reaching out to people, taking supplies to people, picking people up, taking them where they needed to be. And Tyler was very, very much a part of all of that. So I echo Joe's, please keep them in your prayers, reach out to them. And thank you, Joe. Okay, let's move on with number one announcements. Stuart?
Welcome to everybody tonight, first meeting, 2023. We have a few items coming up that I think people might be interested in. First one is a church punch reception. And that's going to be this Saturday, January 14th at 2:00 PM at the Kerr Regional History Center. It's going to celebrate the traditional punches of the four denominations that originally comprised the historic Union Church.
I wonder what that Baptist punch tastes like.
We'll find out maybe. This reception complements the Kerr Regional History Center's current exhibit, which is Kerrville Historic Houses of Worship. And that explores the beginnings of Kerrville's faith traditions and the origins of our ecumenical community. So that reception, reception is free and open to the public, begins at 2:00 PM. Come on out and have some punch. All right, this will be the, we'll have the second trout restocking of the Guadalupe, the Guadalupe River at Luis Hayes Park. And that's going to be Wednesday, January 18th. The rainbow trout are provided by the Texas Park and Wildlife Department's AE Wood Fish Hatchery in San Marcos. And they bring those over and release them into the river. It's a lot of fun to see. Unfortunately, we can never tell you exactly what time they're going to be here because they make several stops that morning. But stocking is timed with the winter water temperatures dropping below a level necessary for the survival of trout, makes for great fishing. A lot of people will come out that day. Everyone's invited to come enjoy the experience. Individuals over 17 years of age are required by law to have a valid freshwater fishing license. As per statewide regulations, there's no minimum length limit. Limit and the daily bag limit is five trout. So another fun event. Be sure and keep that on your calendar. And finally, the Daddy Daughter Dance, we've sold 100 tickets so far. Tickets are on sale for the annual Daddy Daughter Dance. And that's scheduled for February 18th at the Happy State Bank Expo. Lots of tickets still available, $40 per couple and then $15 for additional daughters. This is a great event, a lot of, a lot of fun every year, great, great photos. So keep that on your mind. And if you know someone who wants to go, or if you want to go, contact Parks and Recreation or go online and order a ticket. And that's it for us, council.
Thank you.
Council, anyone have anything they want to add? All right, we will move on to our Kerrville Kindness Award. And if our gentlemen will come up, I don't think we have any ladies involved in this. You'll join me up front. And these are members of the Kerrville Professional Firefighters Association. Now, they are not, make sure I get this right, you're not necessarily all active firefighters right now.
Correct.
Okay, but this is an association that anyone can actually be a part of and do the things that you guys do. Am I correct?
Well, generally firefighters, you have to be part of the association to be a, a, a member of the association. But, but we, but there is an individual here that was a past firefighter, a former firefighter, that, that, that helped us in our, in our efforts.
Okay, very good, very good.
I'm the former.
All right, all right. Why, introduce yourselves before we do the presentation.
My name is Matthew, former firefighter here, but I have toss and dumpsters here in Kerrville.
Okay.
My name is Troy Williams, I'm a firefighter here with Kerrville. I'm the president of the association.
Okay.
Steven Langley, lieutenant here at the Kerrville Fire Department for 10 years.
Arnie Segura, I'm a driver out there at fire station number two on Coronado Drive.
Justin Blue, I'm one of the drivers out of station two as well.
Zane Zinner, I am lieutenant with the Kerrville Fire Department and I'm a shifts vice president.
All right, well, let's let everybody know what you did. So we are recognizing the Kerrville Professional Firefighters Association with the January 10, 2023 Kerrville Kindness Award. The Kerrville Professional Firefighters Association, in coordination with El Paso Property Improvements, Segura Lawn Care, Stephen Langley, Incorporated, and Toss It Dumpsters, recently provided outstanding community service to help a Kerrville citizen clear bamboo cane from her property. Last summer, the Fire Marshal's Office received a complaint about a fire hazard from overgrown 30-foot bamboo cane that took over a neighbor's entire yard. Unfortunately, the owner of the property was an elderly lady with no means to clear the bamboo. After contacting relatives, it was discovered the owner was the widow of former firefighter Carol Tex Abbott, who worked for the Kerrville Fire Department in early 1980s and passed away in 2016. The Kerrville Professional Firefighters Association was contacted and wasted no time organizing a group of firefighters to remove the cane in October 2022. Overall, the team spent about 40 man-hours and 16 heavy equipment hours to remove four large dumpsters of cane. This was a truly amazing transformation to keep the resident and the community safe. That's a lot of bamboo removed. So, well, we thank you very, very much and we appreciate what you've done. And I know we have, you have one homeowner that is very, very, well, and some neighbors too. So, all right. So do we need some pictures here? I'll, I'll let, let you hold that. That's got to stop somewhere, so. All right. Do you like to say something?
I think we're okay.
We'll have a couple minutes here.
Well, I would like to say thank you to Toss It Dumpsters for, and Matt, for him allowing his dumpsters, what, 30-yard dumpsters, we used, we used four of them. And then he also worked with the landfill or with Wheaties to give us a, to get us a discounted price for the dump. And so, and then Steven Langley with his, his, his equipment, Justin Blue with his equipment, which helped remove all the bamboo. Because doing it by, by hand was, was, was not going to be possible.
Take you years and it still would come back.
Yeah, and then, and then Arnie, Arnie has a lawn service. So he, he, he provided his, his employees, three of his, four of his employees for about six hours one day. And it made, it made a huge difference as well.
Well, I'm going to shake all your hands, but I also want you to turn around and shake the hands of our council members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. She says, thank you so much. Yeah. Thank you. That's right. Thank you so much. Thank you all of you. All right, we are ready for number three. Shelley, how many speakers do we have for this?
We do have one citizen speaker signed up.
All right, let's, let's go ahead.
Glenn Andrew.
Glenn Andrew, 3553 Lecombray. More wags and less barks was the mantra our esteemed mayor Eichner offered at her swearing-in. Originally, I had planned a total waggy words comment until events of the past two or three weeks seemed to mandate a few quiet barks. Barks first. Words matter. Words matter. Emotion-laden words matter even more. Emotion words, often laden words often engender highly emotional words in response. And sometimes emotion-laden words embolden dangerous, vile, hate-filled words and even threats. We're witnesses to this. We must all strive to lower the temperature of our words because the wonderful community must never endure again those words which rightfully struck anger, heartbreak, and yes, fear into many of us. With temperatures lowered and more wags, 2023, here we come. Now for the waggy words. We wish a happy 2023 for the staff and the council. I've been pondering, pondering seems to me is actually a euphemism for thinking if one's not smart enough to really think deeply, on some critical actions I hope you'll consider for 2023. Let's go with some of those which I believe were most important. First, please ask for, pass a bond, and pass a bond package and begin the design of a much-needed public safety facility. Oh, wait, you did that in 2022. Thanks. Two, an overall solution to the ongoing short-term rental conundrum is necessary. A solution which is fair to the STR owners, neighbors, city staff, council. Wait, you also did that in 2022. Thank you. Kerrville roads have been designed to be the rainwater drainage system. We must address those streets which are often flooded. Ah, this is already underway and much progress has been accomplished in 2022. Thanks again. Our roads are known for having a few potholes and some in fact need to be replaced. We need to seriously remove on this and resolve this. Wait, you've already made significant inroads here, pun intended. Thanks for 2022. We need to update several city plans, including the Parks Master Plan, the Water Plan, the Subdivision Plan, the zoning code, and a few others. Hey, those and others were completely updated in 2022. Thanks. We should extend our wonderful river trail to the over downtown overlook. Hey, that was already started in 2022. Thanks again. Retention of our trained first responders, first responders is critical. Again, a 2022 market adjustment without a tax increase has dramatically improved that situation. Gosh, all I can say is thanks. Plentiful good water is critical to Kerrville's future. We should drill another high-quality water well into the Ellenberger Aquifer. Ah, that was completed in 2022 also. Thanks again. Our council must be strong advocates for and defend our staff against the outside factless attacks, especially our library. For the majority of our council, you have done this well in 2022. Thanks. I could go on and on about what an incredible year 2022 was and how positively impactful you have been, but, but the timer creeps forward. And I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge that Bill Blackman is a critical participant as a prior mayor. Seriously, I wish in 2023 for this council is for you to be treated with respect, addressed calmly with fact-based comments, shown appreciation and respected as professionals. More wags and no barks, in other words. You so richly deserve this and much more. Each of you offers your time, insight, and untold patience to do critical tasks in an almost thankless situation. So with confidence that I speak for the vast majority of all the Kerrville community, I say, thanks, and thanks.
Thank you.
All right, we move next to the consent agenda. And council, do you have anything on this that needs to be pulled? Do we have any citizens that have anything that needs to be pulled? All right.
I'll move to approve items 4A, B, C, D, E, and F.
Second. Now, second, all in favor, raise your right hand. And it is approved. I believe this is a first, isn't it? That we have not pulled something? Wow, our new year is starting off very good. Thank you, thank you. Pardon? She said it, yes. All right, let's move to 5A.
Ordinance number 2023-03, an ordinance in chapter 26 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas, titled Buildings and Building Regulations, by adding a new article X titled Outdoor Lighting to create standards for outdoor lighting to minimize light pollution, glare, and light trespass caused by inappropriate receding light fixtures, while improving nighttime public safety utility and security, providing a [inaudible] providing automatics related to the subject. We do have some, the speaker signed up.
All right, okay, Drew?
Thank you. First, I'll just point out that you do have a hard copy at your place. And I'll go through what those amendments are briefly.
Can I, sorry, before you start, is this any different than what was in our pocket?
There are a couple of typos of numbering and added exhibits, and I have those in the PowerPoint as well.
I have questions, thank you.
We'll go through those. First, this is Kerrville 2050 item out of the Parks Chapter 4.8 to evaluate the desirability of night sky ordinance. The Code Review Committee started that evaluation in 2019 and on into 2020 and ultimately tabled it at that time to move on to the subdivision code and some bigger projects. Picked it back up last year and as recommended in the ordinance that you have before you. Again, purpose is to reduce glare and improve nighttime visibility and protect our night skies. This is a picture that I've talked about a few times, just showing that light shown in the correct places is actually more safe than bigger, brighter. The reduction of that glare is produced by that shielding. Got a couple of examples here. Talking about light trespass and what some of that means. Here's an example, just showing that obviously the street light is intended to light the street. Different fixtures and different type of bulbs and shielding also inadvertently alight adjacent properties. And that's one of the other things we're trying to prevent. Here's a series of pictures from blackout a few years ago in the Northeast showing the city glow and once that blackout occurred, how much clearer the night sky was. I'll show you that to kind of get to the international dark sky places across southern part of Texas and the Hill Country. And there are several around our area. As you can see by this map, we are kind of what's considered on the edge of the dark from some of that metropolitan glow from our bigger, bigger, larger neighbors. So the more we can do to protect that, we can continue that darkness and keep that light creep and light pollution from continuing. Obviously, this is within our Code of Ordinances, so it's applicable within the city limits for new construction or remodels involving any outdoor lighting. And any lighting must be brought into compliance within 10 years of adoption. And non-conforming structures would have to be updated after a vacancy of more than six months. Marketed for lease or sales aside from that. So if a property is marketed for lease or sale, we're not going to hold that time period against the grandfather property. Same general provisions we talked about before. Shielding, light trespass, outdoor sports facilities, towers, the color temperature of the light, service station canopies, general curfew on lighting, lumen caps for the total lights among a property, adaptive controls, lighting of flagpoles, and then any prohibitions of lighting throughout the city. And again, another example of existing service station that updated their lighting to comply with dark skies in a different city. And you can see, you can actually see the service station much better once you reduce that glare and lessen the lighting and shield those lights appropriately. Here's the two exhibits that have been added in your ordinance. Exhibit A is that picture showing what light trespass is. Just a general description for our citizens to better understand the purpose of that shielding. And then exhibit defining what indoor lighting is that can be considered outdoor lighting. So if you have a glass storefront with low-hanging lights that actually can be seen from outside of the building, those two would, could be regulated as outdoor lighting because they are impacting anything outside of the building. Any lights that are up flush to the ceiling, not visible through the windows obviously would not count towards the outdoor lighting. If you'd be pleased to answer any questions.
My only question is the, can you go back to that previous slide? Okay, the indoor lighting that trespasses outside. Say you have a home and the light on your second floor illuminates outside. Do you have to replace the lighting or can you just put up curtains?
For residential property, I think it would be curtains would be appropriate.
Okay, so the objective is just to keep that light source within your home and not outside?
Correct.
Okay.
And that would still be along the horizontal plane. So the second floor, you're still talking about the, the top plate of that window, not from the ground, you know, at the sidewalk.
Right.
Those lights may still be visible
Yes.
on the ground level, but from the horizontal plane of the top of the window,
Okay.
anything hanging down would count
Okay.
Could you remind me what, what provision that is in, in our ordinance right now? I kept trying to look back at it and I'm sorry, I couldn't. I know I read it somewhere in there, but.
Both of these exhibits are part of the definitions. Light trespass is on page four of your hard copy handout. And just references that exhibit.
And it talks about indoor lighting would also be considered?
Yeah, excuse me, that's outdoor lighting on page five.
Thank you, okay.
This is the second exhibit, first exhibit B.
Okay, thank you, that's what I was looking for.
Drew, how are you, how are you going to monitor 10 years out?
A lot of it's going to be with building permits, anything that requires existing building going through a remodel. Those properties would be updated if they're impacting their outdoor lighting. Other than that, it's going to be education process. As we go through implementation of this, educating the community on what the purpose of the dark sky lighting and why we're protecting the night skies, working with our local building suppliers and what lights are appropriate. Hopefully kind of turning that inventory on the shelves to make sure they're carrying lights that comply. Other than that, it's going to be, like I said, the public education and working through code enforcement. And obviously, we have quite a bit of time to work through that as we look into the cert, going through the certification process. Be another big public engagement through that process as well.
Okay. Council, any further questions?
I, I have a few things, questions and things I'd like to clarify. This is kind of the first time we're not looking at the ordinance altogether at a meeting and haven't had time to review beforehand. So going back, I guess I'll start with the indoor fixtures can be considered outdoor lighting. That's regardless of actually where the fixture is located. You don't have to see the light source as long as any rays are coming out from inside outside, at least that's how it's defined. Fixtures that are installed indoors that cause light rays to shine outside are considered outdoor lighting. So almost any light that you have in your house, if it's outside, if you can be, if it causes light rays to go outside, it's considered outdoor lighting, right?
No, in addition to this exhibit showing that anything below that horizontal plane of the light, that the light source is visible.
So I get the horizontal, but any light inside that has rays coming out is considered outdoor lighting?
It would, it would also include this exhibit showing that the lights are below that horizontal plane.
So they're going down and not up?
Right.
They're blocked by the top?
The top portion of the wall, correct.
Okay, above where the window, so that gap that you have in your ceiling and your top of the window, that gap, if it's there, the horizontal plane, I guess you're defining it as would be the, the top of the window?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So, okay, that makes sense. I still don't think that's, um, this outdoor lighting ordinance, I guess I'll, I'll take a step back. What is a 2050 item? It's a little bit confusing how we get there because we're referencing Guiding Principle P4.8, I think. And the Guiding Principle of P4 is titled, "It's a focus to enhance in investing in our existing parks, their purpose or repurpose, and to improve accessibility for acquiring land for new parks." That's the title of P4. So I don't see how a lighting ordinance gets us to that title and the definition of that guiding principle. But even going further, if you look at P4.8, and I just went, you know, I'm going to the source. This is in our 2050 plan. It says, what's it?
I just, for clarification, mayor, how much should we reference something that we're not able to look at ourselves?
It's on the website if you want to look at it.
No, I mean, I can't pull that right now.
I, I think, I, I think it's okay. I think we're all right here.
Thank you. So, and I was just going to finish off by saying under P4.8, the action item was to evaluate the desirability of a night sky ordinance, which our Code Review Committee, I guess, did, and now it's a job of council to do. But it did say that evaluating that night sky ordinance would address three priorities. And they're abbreviated as Priority Q, D, and T. And Priority D is to create an attractive, active, and connected downtown. I don't see how this creates a connected downtown or an active downtown. If you look at number, or abbreviation Q, focusing on the quality life assets to attract economic development. I don't see how a night sky ordinance focuses on quality life assets. And then looking at T, it says it's to improve tourism infrastructure such as conference spaces, hotel rooms, downtown enhancements, connections to the river events, and training for hospitality workers. I don't see how a night sky ordinance does that. So I'm a little bit confused about how we get to this is an implementation of the 2050 plan with those principles and guides put in place by the community. I don't know if staff has any, can help me understand that because I, no, it's not your fault that, you know, the 2050 plan was created that way, I mean, that's how it was. But also, did the Code Review Committee give us this specific ordinance? Did they see it?
Yes. So the Code Review Committee did evaluate the desirability of a night sky as the action item 4.8. As they looked through, they did acknowledge that that will help increase tourism
Okay.
By protecting the night skies, which is part of our environment and collective part of the Hill Country. Obviously, that those benefits can continue on through tourism, people visiting downtown, visiting our parks, and making sure those spaces can be enjoyed day and night.
Okay, I think we, and with all due respect, I just think we may be stretching it a little bit to get there. I also noticed that the ordinance that's before us, we are required, if we're going to follow the International Dark Sky Association, to be certified as a, a dark sky community, we need to follow their minimum requirements, is that right? And there are several of them. I noticed though that one of them isn't in this ordinance, and it's that sign, sign illumination portion. And I understand that it's because that's going to be adopted later on possibly in the sign code. But I guess I would just like to make it clear, since that's the case, adopting this ordinance alone is not going to give us the ability to be certified as a dark sky community, that other element is still missing.
Correct.
Am I right on that?
Okay.
So basically, we'll ju, we'll wait until that other element is in place.
Right.
And then, how does this affect lighting? I mean, we had examples of pipe and plow earlier at our workshop because of the lighting that's proposed for downtown here near the Heritage Center, vocal building and the parking garage, how does that affect that kind of stuff?
As long as those are less than 50 lumens.
Each?
Those are permitted.
Okay, purple, I guess.
It's purple.
Okay, that answers that. And the last thing, I guess I just want to point out in here that I noticed when we're talking about outdoor sports facilities, for example, there's regulations on that. I noticed that this prohibits us from lighting our parking lots. That seems to be a nature of safety, in my opinion. It says we can.
The sport field lighting is not intended to light the parking lots. The parking lot standards would be lighting the parking lots.
The what now?
The parking standard, parking lights in the parking lot, like you'd see at any shopping center, light the parking lot, not the field lights.
So the parking lot is not considered part of the complex?
It is, but it's not the sports field lighting.
Field lights are field lights, parking lot lights are parking lot lights.
Okay, I think we should probably define that a little bit more in here because it just says the sports facility and the whole thing is considered the facility. Because when it's closed, you can't go to the parking lot, you can't go to the building or the fields, it's all closed. So I would think we could look at that, I appreciate the clarification on that. And then I think the last one was. I'm trying to make sure, oh yeah, there are two more. The flagpoles were restricting people illuminating their flagpoles. That didn't, I didn't find that as a minimum requirement as part of the International Dark Sky Association. If we're restricting that, we can only allow them to do up to two. And then lastly, I was curious about the fine of $2,000. In the initial draft that we received, it said $500. So it's just to clarificate or help me understand how that went up or why.
The initial draft was from the International Dark Sky Association.
Okay.
From their generic template that they use nationwide or, I guess, worldwide. But looking at our ordinances, state law says violation of any municipal code is up to $2,000.
That's what I thought it was, I just want to clarify, thank you.
And just a clarification on the flagpoles, it doesn't restrict the flagpole lighting, it's actually based off the size of the flagpoles. And so a very, very tall flagpole, beyond 20 feet would have to be downlit. And then there are certain lumen restrictions for flagpole under 20 feet, but it doesn't restrict it.
Right, but no matter what, they can only do two, it says. So the last, I'll finish off by saying, I think when we look at the role of government and the role of city council, it's more of the effective delivery of services to our community. And I think we may be reaching in our purpose and in our role of government in this area. Our citizens are restricted a lot in terms of how they can build in the community and various other areas with different regulations and restrictions. And I think we're reaching a little bit when we go and try to adopt this one. So for that reason, I'm not comfortable for, on behalf of the citizens to do this, and I'll be voting against it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments?
As a member of the committee, the code review committee, I'll say it was discussed on several occasions and just remind council that there are representatives that have been appointed and been dedicated to this committee for four years now. And that committee is made up of developers, home builders, homeowners. And I felt like as a council member, that it was important for me personally, as a member of that committee, to listen to the direction of the committee without myself weighing in because I knew I would have to weigh in on this issue as a council member. So I just want to put it out there because I know you guys weren't at the meetings, but that there was a unanimous support from the representatives that were chosen from, well, there were architects and designer, I mean, it's a wide swath of communities. So I just want everyone to know that there was some representation and that there was quite a bit of thought and communication and dialogue about, about the ordinance.
And this has been going on for a long time. Okay, anyone else? Joe, anything? Okay, thank you, Roman, and thank you, Kim. I think we have some speakers, so let's get started.
Greg Martin.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I am here just to say I support the ordinance number three for this year. And I believe that the, the stated goal, as Drew has put it so well, it will raise the bar for lighting ordinances, for lighting kindness, if you will, restricting light trespass. And as much as anything, I think it's going to be beneficial, it's an opportunity to be beneficial in, in two ways. One is for the existing citizens here, the residents here, to preserve the night skies that we do have. The second is the opportunity for additional tourist dollars because the tourist dollars will come in. We know this from experience of other communities, that we have the opportunity to share the, the advantage we have in Kerrville with others who would come and see the night skies. They would be here for other reasons, but see the night skies and come back more often. And so I simply would, would rise to say, I would appreciate the council, their consideration to pass this on the first reading. I believe it's good for the citizens, it's good for the economy, and it will be a progressive step in the right direction for a council to do this. And thank you for listening.
Thank you.
William Rector.
Thank you, Bill Rector, 705 Water Street, Kerrville, Texas. I am here to support this ordinance, I'm here to ask you to pass it on first reading. I'd like to say that the other Hill Country communities, Fredericksburg, Enchanted Rock, Lano, Blanco, Bernie, Dripping Springs, Bandera, Johnson City, New Braunfels, Wimberley, Mason, and Bee Cave have all passed very similar ordinances to improve their communities. But I'm asking you to pass it not because of those communities, but because it is the right thing to do for our community. It is the way to improve our community, the beauty of it and the attraction of it. Any of us who grew up looking at the Milky Way and now go out at night and look up and can't find the Milky Way, realize that we have the opportunity to make an improvement tonight, and I ask for your vote, thank you.
Thank you.
Jeremy Walther.
Jeremy Walther, 332 Clay Street. I wanted to, to recognize council member Garcia's concerns. And I also want to applaud him for questioning and making sure that it does align with the comprehensive plan in asking those questions that you did. But I would like to take an opportunity, if I can, to address some of the concerns that you have because I think they're valid. As a business owner downtown, I recognize the protection of dark skies are important to developing downtown connections and engagement, and they are important to downtown development. And, and what I would cite with our business is we regularly see an uptick in, in revenue and visitors on the weekend. And most of those folks are coming from out of town. And just in the conversations that we have with those guests, you know, what are you doing in town, where are you coming from? It's, it's pretty common that most of these folks are coming from the city. And the reasons that they're in town, there's all kinds of reasons, but the common thread is we want to get out of town. You know, we want to be in a place where we can have experiences that we can't have in the city. And, and although some of them say, yeah, we like the, we like the darkness, you know, we like the small town vibe, it's more of an implied idea that that's one of the qualities that Kerrville has that other places can't offer. And, and it does help, it does help business. And so as a business owner, we have voluntarily done some things under guidance from others who are experts in this because we think it's a good investment in our business and in downtown as well. And so I'm very much a supporter of this ordinance. But, and I, and I very much want to thank you personally for questioning that and, and kind of holding our feet to the fire to make sure that we're, we are doing this in alignment and, and with consistent, consistency. So, thank you.
Thank you, just doing my job, thank you.
Dawn Davies.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's Dawn Davies, I'm the Night Sky Program Manager for Hill Country Alliance. And I want to applaud the city here and the council members and also the cocommittee for taking on this endeavor. I've had the pleasure of working with the committee and with the Kerr County Friends of the Night Sky now for over a year, working on this ordinance, as I have done in many other communities. I do want to thank you, as, as this gentleman just said, for bringing up those issues. I can tell you in every single instance you addressed specifically with regards to your 2050 plan, night sky preservation plays into every single one of those. It will be a tremendous benefit to the Kerrville community from a standpoint of tourism, bringing in those outside dollars, astrotourism, which is definitely becoming a much more common buzzword and a much more common practice, but also for the sake of your residents. Night sky preservation and proper lighting ensures proper health for humans, for wildlife, for nature life. So in every aspect of our living, using proper night sky preservation techniques and practices is going to ensure our prosperity. And not only that, but holding on to the heritage that the city has and preserving the night skies that you already have and ensuring that that is not lost. It's going to be a financial benefit to your residents and to your business owners from a standpoint of lighting becoming much more affordable, the technology behind it becoming much more efficient. It's going to mean a lot with regards to the available resources. As we can see, it's very hard to find incandescent light bulbs anymore. Everyone's gone from incandescent to compact fluorescent to LEDs. So adopting this ordinance is actually just keeping up with the current technology and ensuring that your residents can do so. And of course, you know, with Hill Country Alliance, we want to applaud any community that is taking on this endeavor to not only preserve the community and the natural heritage and beauty, but also with regards to the night skies because it is a direction that many communities have already begun going in the direction of in the Hill Country. And especially with the adoption last month of the resolution to pursue an International Dark Sky Association designation, it goes a long way to put Kerrville on the map for preserving that edge of night that we care so fondly about and which means so much to not only the community here, but also the community surrounding. Because unlike water or land, as I like to say, the night sky has no borders. So what you do here in the city of Kerrville is going to affect every community around and every community as much as 50 to 60 miles away. So what you're doing is you're a, a role model. And adopting this ordinance just puts you in that higher status of a role model that is a benefit to the other community leaders who are going to want to start adopting these ordinances as well so we can create an entire Hill Country that is night skies friendly and dark. Thank you. I also have several letters that have been presented to us in support of this ordinance as well.
Thank you.
Jeff Stone.
Happy New Year, Council, Mayor. I would likewise, my name is Jeff Stone, 1048 Hyphenway. I would like to echo Jeremy's thoughts of appreciating Roman and your questioning of what's going on here. Those are very insightful questions and we need absolutely to listen to those. I am the last person who's going to just take a restriction laying down, not going to do it. But we do need, as Dawn said, we do need to protect what we have. And the best way to do that is, I think, reflected in this ordinance. To get there, like you were saying, you don't see how the ordinance gets to the 2050 plan. That's, that's a function of education. And the Kerr County Friends of the Night Sky are dedicated to that education. We're going out, talking to everybody we can to help them understand how important the night sky is and how they're going to benefit from this particular ordinance and the efforts that we take. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kevin Wissels.
Good evening, I just wanted to say thank you for your time and consideration on this to preserve our shared heritage, and it's for future generations and for us now. So I just thank you for that and thank you for everything you've done to look at this deeply and to consider it. Appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
Charlie McElveigh.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, thanks for the opportunity to speak this evening. We've all talked this evening, or most of the individuals talked about the importance of tourism. And you've all heard me talk over the years about not only the importance, but the amount of revenue that is generated by visitors coming into the community and the amount of tax dollars that is reduced or the tax burden that is reduced to the citizens of Kerrville when our visitors are here. So this is a, an additional tourism component that is fairly easily attainable. We do have groups that do track night skies and spend time with telescopes and what have you, enjoying the night skies. This could also be tied into the eclipse project, or at least we could have people that will be here for the eclipse that will want the opportunity to come back if they're aware of, there's a strong night sky program here. So I highly encourage you to support this ordinance. This will be one more component that will be enhancing the quality of life that we all enjoy here in Kerrville. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That is the end of the citizen speakers.
Thank you very much. All right, I would like to thank the, the committee. You guys have spent a lot of time on this and it's been in the works for a long time. And we are finally here to the first reading. And I just want to express my appreciation to all who were involved with that. All right, Council, any comments or question, final questions?
Have there been any consideration to thoughts on possibly amending the ordinance that's been presented to us? In, in any respect? Or is this kind of the level that we're looking at, direction we're looking at going? Like, is there any flexibility kind of in any of the provisions?
This is the recommendation of the code review committee, so that's what was brought, what was brought forward to you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and I would think that this, along with, you know, 2050 plan is something we will be looking at in the near future. And, and as time goes on, that some of these things may need to be tweaked a little bit. And, but overall, I think that we've got, I think we've got a good starting point. So, did you have anything in particular, Roman?
The, the, every provision that I hit on were the ones that I was considering of there's any flexibility on amending those. And, yeah, that, that's probably what it was. And, and I don't know if we need to, I don't know if this is what you were referring to, but I don't know if we need to look at our 2050 plan and try to amend it so this fits in. I think when we look at it and the guiding principles and everything, it doesn't seem to add up to me. And that's why, and that's just why I made that statement, I didn't get it.
Well, I, I feel like the committee has gone over this in detail and that they also looked at the 2050 plan, I'm sure. I know, I'm not sure, I know. And that they have felt that, as they have done all of that, that, that it is, it's close enough to align with what we've got and that, and from my standpoint, that in time, if we feel there's something that needs to be changed, it can be looked at and that could happen. I would like to recommend that we accept it. I would like to recommend that we accept it.
Oh, Mayor, that we approve ordinance number 2023-03 on first reading?
I'll second that. We have a first and a, or a motion and a second. Everyone in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, everyone opposed? All right, Mr. Garcia is opposed. And thank you all.
Thank you, thank you.
That's good.
All right, let's move to 5B.
Ordinance number 2023-04, an ordinance closing, abandoning, and vacating all right title and interest in the public right of way. Consisting of an unimproved, unopened portion of West Street that extends between Lowest Street and adjacent to the properties addressed at 620 and 704 Junction Highway, State Highway 27. Said right of way out of the Westland Place Edition subdivision within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas pursuant to the plat record of 1, page 26 of the plat records of Kerr County, Texas and corresponding filed notes. And located within the city of Kerrville, Texas, finding that said portion is not required for future use of public street, ordering recordings, providing effective date, providing other matters related to the subject. You do have one, two, the speakers find out.
I don't believe you're Stewart.
I am not Stewart, but I'm going to stand in this for just a couple of minutes or seconds, as it were. So we are here tonight to, to consider the abandonment of this portion of West Street, which was platted and not built. And it's been kind of that way since 1925. We currently have utility easements running through those areas. We have the lower Lowest Drainage Project that is on the other side of 27 that's just been completed, we were talking about earlier, in the CIP project. And we're going to have an upper Lowest Project. And as a part of that, we need an easement that is currently running through the property. It's not our property, it's, we don't have an easement across that. We discussed, staff discussed.
Wait, what were you saying as far as the property?
So it has a weird, it's not a squared off piece of property.
Yeah.
And so in the very, very kind of bottom right edge of their property, it juts out 18 feet about, a little less than halfway from junction to the back of that property. And it comes over 18 feet. So it has a strange configuration.
To be clear, and maybe you'll go over this in your presentation, we have to be very careful in, Mr. Hayes is kind of, and I, and has briefed us all, and I know we've talked about it. The ownership issue versus the easement issue, are you going to talk about that or is that a question I need to ask? Because that's going to determine what we can and cannot do with the property. So this was in a plat that was dedicated to the public.
Yes, ma'am.
Or to, to the city. So it was conveyed by plat dedication.
Yes and no.
Yes and no, okay, tell me, should I wait until it's question time?
Yeah, why don't you let him get through that?
Absolutely.
So, notwithstanding the attorneys and the folks from the title company who have a much more thorough understanding of this than us do. We are, we are efforting to abandon this street that was never built as a street, never meant to be used as a street. It's a drainage channel for all intents and purposes, and we run our utilities underneath that. In exchange for us abandoning portion of this and, and the property owner obtaining his piece of this. The city also is in need of an easement on their property so that we, we can run a wastewater line along a whole edge of this, straight through that entire straight section.
Which, sorry, which section?
So.
It's not the yellow portion, is it?
The yellow portion, yes, sir.
It is.
That is on their property, so yeah, that's what we need, right? And, and so the property owners requested an exchange, more or less like in layman's terms. But the legal ease terms, as Councilwoman Clarkson and city attorney knows, are slightly more complicated than an exchange. So if you see in your ordinance, it calls for an appraisal of the property. The staff's recommendation is that the value of the easement that we would obtain would more than cover the cost of that appraisal of that never to be used piece of property for any kind of building. The property can't be used for anything because it has our easements, it has our utility lines underneath it. It would essentially be at most an extension of a parking lot. And so that's basically the process. And it's a little convoluted. You guys hit me up with a little bit of the attorneys and the title company are going to have to talk it through about some of the minutia that I may not be privy to yet. Although me and Stewart, I think, are going to have our law degrees by the time we get through with this year. Having said all that, here's the original plat. This is a, it's, it's just a weird little section of road. And if you can imagine Junction Highway comes at an angle splitting through this and set a bunch of interesting parcels over the years. Essentially what we're asking, abandon the property, exchange it for general utility easements from the property owner. And that's what we're asking. And same again, that little exchange area. Hard to see that red portion, it's not squared off and squared off, it looks kind of like a Kansas or Oklahoma, the red portion. And then the yellow portion is just a little squared off piece, and that's what we're asking for the exchange of. The new easement area would look like, it would cover the entire section right there. And we would be able to run straight through from that drainage channel from front to back without having to deviate. Here's our current utility structure. As you can see, we kind of come up, go to the right, and then come up. And this would allow us the ability to have more straight line process in the future. And that is it. I didn't do 20 seconds.
So this essentially paves the way for us both to move forward with the improvement to the Tech Dot Bridge Structure there on Highway 27. It helps us move forward with the North Lowest project, once Tech Dot completes their project. And also helps move forward with the NAP wastewater extension. So stands the ability to process this exchange of easements and property. Those three projects are.
That stands still.
That stands still. So we would ask for authorization to move forward in any and all actions in order to process this easement exchange.
Has the easement that we're wanting in the right of way that we have that in this exchange, have those been appraised yet?
No.
That's why I was asking for some clarification on that.
Okay.
No, this is, one, let me, let me just say this. When the smoke clears, we hope that you all will approve this action. We'll no longer own a unimproved, unmarked street right of way that we have no intent of ever using, right? And then we'll help the property owner expand his property so that he can do some additional development. And what I try to do in these ordinances is, we don't do them all the time. Ms. Clarkson, you've been on council, you know, almost, what, four years, and we think this is the second one, maybe?
Not enough to you.
Okay. We don't do them all the time. And so when I, when I get these issues, I remind staff, it's very, very, not technical, but very nuanced. Because you start with easements or you start with fee simple and you have to analyze it. And then there's state law that comes involved. And state law, as you can imagine, is not the clearest at times. And so. Staff at some point was ready to spring me up because it was just a very complicated transaction. But what we've come to believe, both myself and another attorney, two other attorneys involved, and then the title company, is that this actually. We went to a plaque and accompanying field notes, both of which were filed in the property records in 1925, 26, that this is actually fee simple. And that's what KCAT has it listed as. And that's what was so confusing at the beginning, because I would look at KCAT and it looked like a lot. And I said, it can't be a lot, it's a street, right? And so, but we've landed on.
Because it through the, through dedication.
Through dedication, but it says grant.
Granting, right, a granting language.
And so at the end of the day, the, this property owner, this applicant who's asked us to vacate this is going to want to get title insurance on that. And so we ran it by the title company and they're, they, they said, yeah, we think it's fee simple, we're willing to issue a policy on that fact. And so I tried, in these ordinances, I try to spell out the factual makeup of the issues. And then, of course, when we get to the sections, that's exactly what you all are going to prove us, hopefully prove us to do.
So when you're saying fee simple, that triggers a set of direction for us as a city to go.
Yes, and it's all spelled out here.
So then you're saying that because of that, the exchange is.
We have to get an appraisal, right? We think that the appraisal will come back at a nominal value, if any value, because there's easements coursing through it. It's a oddly configured tract. We're going to have them, when we convey a deed over, we're going to reserve additional space. And so we think at the end of the day, there won't be much, if any, buildable area. Now they can extend their parking lot, which is exactly what they want to do. But, yeah, it's a complicated process. And I wish that we had a bow tied on it and I wish we had an appraisal for you all tonight. We've been dealing with this off and on since September. And really, the request came in two years ago, but we had to wait because of this project going on. And we didn't know what we wanted and what we wanted to reserve.
So we're following the process defined by the law for a fee simple abandonment? Okay, that's all I.
And when it's all said and done, we know exactly what we'll have and how it will be, and they will know what they have.
Yes.
Yes.
That appraisal is done, is that to ensure that the transaction is equal? Or how is that?
The appraisal is just done because state law requires it.
So at the end of the day, and the appraisal is going to happen after we adopt this ordinance? Is that right?
Well, we, I asked somehow between staff and the applicant, we're going to negotiate that. Because there's all, there's all sorts of property interests involved. And we want to be fair to them and we want to be fair to us. Because we're getting, we're getting value out of this deal. We're getting a project that's going to alleviate at a minimum flooding on the Lowest area. And so we have to work through that. But we've actually, I don't know, Stewart's not here, but he was actually going to try, I think, try to get him to try to actually secure an appraisal, at least get that in the pipeline now. But odds are, we're not going to have that before second reading. But we're at a point where this property owner wants to proceed forward. We need to proceed forward because we need to be able to tell Tech Dot, it's all free and clear, we're ready to move forward with the project. And so that's where we are.
So they're going to get something, or no, we're getting something of value in this exchange. And so are they in terms of the land. But we don't, we don't know if that's equal in terms of the appraised value yet, though.
Well, I will say this, Council. Mr. Garcia, it's an arms-length transaction. And what that means is, you know, they've got their attorney on their side, they've got me on my side and staff. And we think at the end of the day, when the smoke clears, both parties are going to be satisfied with what happens.
Okay. Do we have, I don't, do we have a policy for abandoning any type of land or road or easement or right of way or anything like that?
We don't. Part of the reason is we just don't get these that often. We have a couple more that are pending. And I think once we get rid of this one, we'll turn our attention to those.
Okay.
So we don't do them that often. And frankly, there's state law involved and we have to work through that process.
And each one is, I was just going to say, each one's going to be different. These are.
They really are.
Yes.
I wish they were the same. My, I like when stuff is consistent and the same, but it's really rarely is.
There's going to be cases where we don't have any need to acquire anything, so we're simply a piece of land, and that would be a little bit different.
Right.
And is there any type of agreement already in writing with the property owner to say that if this were to happen, this conveyance to them and if this ordinance passes, that we will get that? Party, is that in the ordinance or is that a separate agreement that has?
No, we don't, we don't have a separate agreement. But keep, but keep in mind, if you all adopt this ordinance, we're not going to, it's conditioned. And it says that, right? It says you, the property owner has to do X, Y, and Z, and these things have to occur first. We control the transaction because we won't, one, file this in the property records, nor will we, you know, obviously draft a deed and convey the interest. And, you know, that's another thing that comes to mind. When, when we go through these transactions, what I'm hoping to do is in 10 years, when this property sells again, I don't get a call from a title company. What did y'all do here? Why did you do it this way? And I really hope that this clears it up. And we have streets like this all over town that are dedicated by plat and the language isn't perfectly clear. We just have to go through it and we have to do the best, make the best call we can.
Well, the ordinance doesn't indicate anything like, that they have to give it to us in order for this to come to fruition or for this to be in effect or anything like that?
That's. No, no, it's conditioned in there, right? They have to do certain things.
Yeah.
Part of it is the conveyance of the easement to us?
And appraisal and the survey. They're working on that. And again, we, we control it, this is our document. We won't file it in property records or do anything else until we have, we know exactly what we're doing and what the appraisal says and what we think the value is. And all that comes to fruition. And I'll. I'll certainly view all of it as to what, what ultimately occurs with this transaction.
But you need this in order to move on with it.
We do, we have a timing from Tech Dot and it's just time we get this cleared up and we're done.
Okay, any other questions or comments, Council?
Is that in section six or seven that we're referring to for the, their, I guess their side of the transaction?
If you look at, so if you look basically at five, six, and seven, those are all. All the things that we're going to have to go through before we get to eight, which is then the city secretary is authorized to file this ordinance.
So the, the part where they have to convey, that it says they have to convey their, their land to us, that easement, where is that?
Well, okay, that may not be in here specifically, but.
Okay, so that's what I was trying to get at.
Well, at the end of the day, it says. Isn't here, they've got to provide a survey. We have to go somehow get an appraisal between the two of us. And we're not doing anything until all those conditions are done. And that says that a couple of times in here.
Okay, thank you.
All right, this is first reading, did we have a speaker?
Yes, George Burry.
George Burry, 1616 Glen Road. So some of my questions got answered, so I won't go over those. But kind of to, Mr. Garcia was talking about reading through the, I mean, if I'm reading this right, it's an ordinance that is committing the city to convey. And with those conditions. But the conditions in seven don't talk about, this is the first time I've seen that yellow box that was up there. So that easement that you're obtaining isn't defined anywhere, it's not even generally talked about in the ordinance. It just says that they're going to plat this stuff. I think in section seven, it says they're going to have to plat precedent to vacation abandonment and conveyance, which I think is kind of impossible because they don't own it unless they have, it's been conveyed. So how would they plat it? But, but it says absorbing the property as well as confirming the easements, but it, it doesn't define them. And as I read it, it made me think that it was referring to the easements that currently, or the utilities that currently exist in that right of way. Until this yellow box, like I say, that's the only reference point we had. So I, I would say that maybe by second reading, that gets cleared up a little bit and then maybe everything else you said kind of flows. Otherwise, you're, I think you're asking Council to approve a sale without telling them, defining in their, their ordinance, what they're getting in return for what they're giving away. What we're giving away is defined. So, you know, to the timing issue, I'm not sure. But it seems like if this is all going to be contingent upon them doing this, then maybe the second reading should be tabled until it's all prepared. You know, the appraisal and whatnot, because there's still some negotiation left. Anyways, that's just my thought.
Thank you.
And I'm sure that will happen. So it will all be there when we.
All right.
Is that something that, that we can leave second reading until we do have more information as far as the return of?
You can, you all absolutely have everything. That you want to do. I mean, if you want to table this or second reading, I wouldn't table second reading because I, I don't like it when there's that much time.
A gap that, that big between the two?
I'll say this, I don't agree with the speaker's comments. I think the ordinance is clear. I think we control obviously the plating process. We're not gonna do anything with this ordinance, again, if you all give us authority, with respect to a property transaction without the property owner, um, performing. And that's both making sure we understand where the current easements are on, on this property, and, and then expanding those easements, and that, um, you know, uh, and then eventually he'll have to plat. And keep in mind, too, that state law says we have to both make sure, um, the adjacent property owners are both involved in some way. And, uh, the property next to it is the familiar property. And so, uh, we're gonna have to go to them and say, do you all want any part of the transaction? And so, again, there's, there's, there's a few things to do, but I'm confident that we can get those done. Perhaps not by second reading, but this, this gives us the roadmap to get, to move forward.
I, I have a hard time thinking that the receipt of an appraisal would change the direction of anything. We're already perceiving to get value from the transaction, um, through what, acquiring the, acquiring what we need to move our projects forward. I mean, is that, I, I need to feel confident that there's not any reason for me to believe that an appraisal would change the kind of action that we need to take.
Well, I mean, I guess there's a. It, you know, if, if somehow the appraisal comes back and it's a million dollars, I, I don't think the transaction's gonna move forward, right? Um, I don't think that's gonna, gonna occur. I think once we make sure the appraiser knows that we have lines in the right-of-way, that we're going to, um, actually, uh, extend and, and create more space within the right-of-way. Um, I think, you know, you're, you're gonna get a heavily discounted appraisal that either has very, a nominal value or value at all, um, based upon, again, what, what's there now, what's gonna be there later, and, uh, what the, what the transaction's gonna, you know, involve.
But I think we need to remember, this is not committing us to anything but a mechanism to move forward.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, Michael, do you have something you want to add?
I was gonna say yes to your answer, Councilwoman Clark. Nothing's gonna change materially. They can never build on property, they can't do anything that's, that's, that's gonna change it in any way, shape, or form, other than it would go from being dirt to being a little bit of parked paved concrete. Yes.
All right, anyone else?
I would concur with the citizen speaker. It was the first time I had also seen the yellow area. It wasn't, it's not a part of the exhibit B that's in our package and attached, or part of the ordinance. And that was actually one of the questions I was gonna come and ask for. So I think if we can get that in there, if that's the case, that, that's what we're requiring, um, or, or some type of description. I think that it needs to be in there. Also, it still shows with the comments by staff that it's not clear. Both, both sides of the transaction are not clearly defined in here. It shows what we're giving, but it doesn't show what we're getting. And it, it's, it's not clearly defined, and I think that it needs to be if we would consider it. So I would just ask if we can have both of those things done, and table this, and have both of those things done before we move forward. That would be my request.
Uh, probably, we could be provided with the, the, um, slide that shows, has the yellow on there. That, 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 we, you could do that for us.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Well, if we do that, what we're voting on right now does not even include that. That's why I'm asking that we, if we can table it to fix all of this before we move forward.
We, how about if we do this, not to interrupt, but, um, well, that's really the first time, I didn't, my fault, I didn't look at the, I, I, I don't know where that came from. Stuart provided the exhibit for this ordinance, and so I'll get with him as to whether we need to amend the exhibit that's in here, and answer those questions for next time. But, um, I, again, in my professional opinion, based on what's written here, um, I think it's a very clear ordinance as to where we're going and, uh, what the owner has to do. Um, and I'm, you know, again, I'm confident that once we, once we, the conditions are met, and we move through this, that at the end of the day, uh, it'll be a fair transaction pursuant to state law. And we, um, we'll put that title in that area.
Well, and I think it's important to remember, this doesn't obligate us.
Why?
It doesn't obligate us.
I don't understand that, why does it not? Because it says we.
Because there's conditions and limitations.
Yes.
And it says that.
If those are met, then it does require us to give us.
But the, the, the final deed is not done.
Right.
And, and until that's done, we are not obligated. We are gonna negotiate this with them and meet all the conditions that are, that are listed.
So if there's still negotiations pending, I move to table ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash oh four, pending those further negotiations that both the mayor and staff have referred to, as well as responses from staff on some of that information, so you can at least get that cleared up before we move forward.
Do we have a second to the motion?
Did you move?
Yes, I have a motion to table.
He moved to table.
Oh, to table.
Do we have a second? It dies because of a lack of second. Um, do we have another motion? Do we have a motion to move forward with this as presented?
I move that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash four on first reading, and authorize the city manager to complete any and all necessary actions to finalize the property easement exchange.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor? Right hand, please. Opposed? We have one, Mr. Garcia. All right, thank you. Five C. You wanna read that in for us, uh, Shelley?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Sorry, I was recording the vote.
That's all right.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero five, and ordinance admitting ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six, and the ad loryum tax for the use and support the municipal government of the city of Kern, Texas, for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. We do have two citizen speakers sign up.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, so I'm here to talk to you about ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh five, which would essentially address an error, uh, that was discovered in the, uh, original tax rate ordinance, uh, that was approved back in September. Um, so first, I'll say the ordinance, uh, was department's, uh, finance department's responsibility. So I'm gonna own that mistake and kind of walk you through the history a little bit quickly. Um, I know I outlined it in detail within the agenda bill, but happy to answer any questions about that as, as we go through this. I'll also say that Bob Reeves is here, our tax assessor collector, uh, who may also be able to, uh, answer questions that may be outside of my purview. Okay, so you'll remember that back on August ninth, uh, we presented the budget with a proposed tax rate of five seven five two. Uh, that was with an estimated, um, pending bond sale, um, estimating the debt rate to be fourteen eleven. And so, as we moved forward through that process, we continued with that same ordinance. On the afternoon of August twenty-third, uh, which was the first reading of, uh, all of the ordinances, the budget ordinance, the tax rate ordinance, and the ordinance to sell the bonds, uh, we received notification that we received a slightly lower interest rate on the bond sale that allowed us the opportunity to reduce the tax rate by point zero 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 two. Um, so we went ahead and moved forward with that recommendation, just with the intention of being transparent about what we sold the bonds for, and then also collecting only what we needed to cover debt for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Uh, so, as we went through that, um, typically, the process is, once an ordinance is adopted, uh, tax rate ordinance, it's sent to the tax assessor collector, um, who then adds that tax rate to their books and initiates property tax statements from that. So, the error occurred, uh, with that ordinance that was sent to the tax assessor, which was the original ordinance of the five seven five two. So, property tax statements essentially were billed on the five seven five two rate instead of the five seven five oh. Okay? So, we caught this mistake when we were going through the final, um, review of our budget document and preparing that for publication. And so when we found that mistake, we went to, obviously, Mr. Hayes, um, EA, TML attorneys, um, but have worked with the tax assessor and their attorneys to kind of decide what's the route forward, what options do we have? So before I talk about that, just wanna give you a little bit of impact. So, we ran some numbers, um, multiple times, Bob and I both ran them separately, um, came up with the same number, so we're in agreeance on what the actual impact is. So potentially, pre-collection on the debt portion of the rate. So none of this is in the maintenance and operations portion, so all of this, any, any that is collected will be retained in the debt fund. There's no impact to anyone who has frozen taxes or any exemptions or property exempt organizations. So about thirty-seven hundred, uh, out of our thirteen thousand five hundred taxpayers, uh, are either frozen or exempt for one reason or another. Um, property tax revenue budget in the debt fund is three point five million to pay debt, and that's just the property tax portion. Uh, the impact to that, um, if a hundred percent of this excess collections was received, would be forty-one hundred and twenty-six dollars. So about a tenth of a percent, um, of the overall budget, uh, would be excess collections. So, average prepayment, looking at an average homeowner of about two hundred and seventy-five thousand, and that comes from Kirkad, as far as where our average property owner value is, is about fifty-six cents per homeowner. Um, on a hundred thousand dollars, it's twenty cents, and on five hundred thousand dollars, it's a dollar. So that's when we get to that, that dollar average. So our process every year for, uh, calculating the property tax rate, specifically the debt rate, we provide our total collections to Bob, and then if there's excess collections from frozen taxes, if we had a refunding, if we had penalties and interest, um, collected from the prior year, all of those things are calculated in an over-collection line item. And you can see that within our property tax rate calculation, and that is figured into the total, uh, ta, tax rate and also the debt rate. So that's recalculated every year. It's super common for us to have over-collections for those reasons. But for transparency, we report that, so, um, by state law, and then Bob uses that to certify our, uh, overall tax rate. So that's important just to know, um, that whatever we do, um, you have two options, of course, um, and we'll go with whatever council recommends. However, um, this will be recorded at the end of the year with whatever that happens to be. Keep in mind, we budget at a ninety-eight percent collection rate, just based on historical data, so at a hundred percent, it'd be right at forty-one hundred dollars. So, um, after we talked to multiple, uh, people, um, we have two options for correction, basically. So, option one, uh, would be to adjust the property tax rate back to what was originally presented, um, on eight nine, which would be the five seven five two. So it's a point zero zero two increase, same as the decrease that was recommended. So if we adjust it back to that, um, we'll have, require two readings of this ordinance, of course, and no further action is needed. Um, the other option, and what we initially thought, uh, was a, was a good option, was to send the corrected, or the correct ordinance, the adopted ordinance, over to the tax assessor's collector's office, and have them, especially after we saw the little bit that it was gonna impact, leave a credit on a taxpayer's account. They can't do that. So if we adopt or re-adopt the five seven five oh and have them correct that, then any overpayment, even, no matter how small, has to be refunded by a check in the mail. So it'll cost about a dollar, for example, to issue a check for fifty-six cents. The issue that comes along with that is, and anyone who especially has businesses, still date checks becomes a real problem. So most people who get a check for fifty-six cents in the mail are not gonna cash it. So those have to be kept on the county's books by law for three years. Uh, we do the same thing here within the city. As you see press releases about unclaimed property, that's oftentimes what it is, is someone hasn't cashed a check that we've sent out. So that was the big implication there. Of course, we'll go with whatever option council, um, requires us to do. Um, my recommendation would be adjustment of the tax rate, simply because the cost associated with the process of refunding all of those taxpayers. Um, we don't know what that number is, um, as of yet. I can tell you that roughly thirty percent of our tax, uh, taxes were collected, um, as of a week ago. And so, um, January will be our heaviest month. So those statements would go out February first, according to, um, Bob, and then, you know, we could proceed from there if that's what you so choose to do. But we're looking at a hard cost of somewhere around nine thousand dollars, uh, with mailing, printing, um, check stock, and those kind of things. So, again, that's the short version, um, of it. We went into some detail within the agenda bill, I'm happy to answer questions on that. Um, but rest assured, um, our department for sure, as well as other departments, have already put in some processes to make sure that we have a more stringent review before things leave the office to go to external places. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, Council, so any questions, comments?
Uh, do we have anybody signed up to speak, or?
We do have two speakers.
I'm sorry, I don't have questions.
Okay, all right. Uh, anyone have a question or comment before we hear our speakers?
Julie, um, I wanna thank you for making yourself available. Julie left her, uh, duties, um, her public service duties to come and meet with me and just walk me through this, and I appreciate that. Um, one of the things that we talked about, Julie, was the over-collection on the debt portion. And one of the things that struck me was, there's no way for the city to absorb this four thousand dollars into another line item, because it's designated funds for debt repayment. So there's not any way to do that now. We also talked about over-collections, when they get to a certain threshold, it's automatically going to, um, calculate and reduce future tax rate on the debt portion if we've over-collected to a, to a, to a certain level. So in other words, we are only using these four thousand dollars towards debt repayment, and if our threshold, and we're holding too much money for debt, we, we have to recalculate and lower that. So we could expect if our over-collection gets high enough because of this four thousand dollars, then we will have to, how, I mean, we want to reduce the tax rate every year, obviously, but we would have to, because there are certain triggers in place.
Right, so the debt rate gets calculated first, and by law, we have to pay debt before we can do anything else. So that's the first portion of our calculation when we're talking about the overall tax rate. And we do, if you, if you look at our tax rate calculation, you see over-collections every year, and it's a multitude of reasons. Um, but that's part of the reason why we report, and then the tax assessor's office does the calculation. So there's some certification there, and then some cross-checking and those kind of things, so we make sure that, that everyone's speaking the same language, and the numbers are, are true and correct at year end. But you're right, so if, you know, we were to over-collect to the magnitude that, you know, we had an extreme amount of reserve, then we would have to adjust the rate down. Um, and that impact, you know, the debt rate's naturally going to reduce some on its own. Um, now with, you know, fourteen, um, eleven or oh nine, whichever you choose, to being the max that it can be, after the voter-approved, um, bond sale adjustment. And it's normal for you to retain some reserves, so it's okay for us to hold on to some money in a reserve fund in case we don't collect, uh, property tax. And we've seen some examples where software's gone down, property tax, um, bills haven't been able to send out, so it moves the due date back for property owners, and so taxes are collected late. Or someone issue, adopts a tax rate that isn't enough, uh, to collect, um, property taxes enough to pay the debt that's in front of them. So there's, there's reasons that you can hold that, but there's only a certain threshold, um, that you can hold. Um, and our fund balance reflects that at, at year end every year.
Okay, so, so to repeat something in your presentation, you're saying that, first, you're saying that the average home price in our community is two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And if that is the value of your home, your tax statement went out, and you're paying fifty-six cents more than what the five seven five oh debt portion of the taxes.
Essentially, unless there were caps or other things that could be less.
With no other, no other exemptions, no caps, no nothing, okay.
Fifty-six cents.
All right, and in returning a fifty-six or less or more, but, but average of fifty-six cent check, and we've over-collected by four thousand dollars, if we are to go back and, and go back to our five seven five oh rate, then we're gonna spend in mailing, um, and producing checks, roughly nine thousand dollars.
Roughly nine thousand dollars.
And then we're going to have to keep that money on the books for th- three years, waiting for citizens to, to.
Cash the check.
Cash a fifty-six cent check. And then if they don't cash it after three years, then we have to remit it to the state.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, it's common, we have unclaimed property all the time, and typically, it is because of small amounts that
people just.
They're just don't.
Pause things.
Excuse me.
Okay. All right, uh, our speakers, Shelley, let's go ahead.
George Broody.
Yeah, wait.
Yeah, that's fine.
Uh, George Broody, sixteen sixteen Glen Road. I appreciate her giving the explanation of what, what happened, I wasn't really sure about that. Wasn't really sure about that, but, you know, taking ownership. This is one of those things that, obviously, in the grand scheme of things, $4,000 out of 32 million or 12, whatever we're talking, property tax, isn't that much. So it's, and neither is 9,000 in my estimation. I feel like it's one of those things where we just ought to do the right thing. And to me, the right thing is, as much as it's annoying, is to give that refund because what we're what we're proposing to do right now is to say that we're going to change our tax rate after we've already told the public what it was going to be. We're not adopting an ordinance to amend an ordinance. We're adopting an ordinance to amend the tax rate. And I don't know if that's really proper. It's kind of like if you go into a store and you bought something, and somebody had put the wrong price tag, you paid for it, and you walk away, and you find out it was an overpayment, you'd be wanting a refund. I think they did something similar with the water bills about a year ago. It wasn't refunds, but it was a it was a misstatement was sent out. I think it was disconnect notices or something. We fixed it. It was a cost, but we fixed it. Having said all that, I'm not even sure if we have the authority to modify the tax rate in this way. The laws that got referenced in this ordinance are referring to something that talks about when you can adopt the tax rate, which is what you're doing. This is a tax increase essentially. And a public hearing with public notice is required. And within a certain frame timeframe from that public hearing, you have to begin to vote on it. There was no public hearing on this. This is a change of a tax rate without a public hearing. And I'm not sure where in the tax code that's authorized, but I'd be interested to find that out. And like I said, as a taxpayer, I'm good with, we messed up, this is what we're going to do to fix it. You know, we're going to give out refunds, and it's going to cost you a little bit of money, and we've put process in place to prevent it from happening again. To me, that's a fix. What we're doing now is a little bit, I think it's a little backdoor. And I would appreciate if you would at least ask the question, where is the authority coming from to modify the tax rate in this way without public notice? Thanks.
Thank you.
Bruce Drakey.
Bruce Drakey, 615 Earl Garrett Street. I started going to city council meetings in 2001, and it was in a different community. And I've been to many communities through my business over the over 20 years of doing that. And of course, you know, this is my community now. But in over 20 years, I can tell you that seeing a municipal staff member come up and admit that they made a mistake has happened less than five times. And especially in today's politics, we want to obscure and blind where things are coming from. And it doesn't matter which political party, or which municipality, or which state, or the country, it's happening all over the world. And so first, before we talk about, I'd like to talk about the issue, I'd just like to thank Julie for coming up here in public and admitting that her staff and herself made a mistake, and she's looking for the best path forward, whatever that path is. So I admire that. I've rarely seen it. Look, I looked at this, and to be honest with you, I was, there was no link on the packet, and I had to go dive into the packet to actually see what this issue was because I was confused. And I look at the packets every week, or every two weeks, as you all know, every twice a month. And so I was very interested in this. And I was disappointed to see that this had happened. And I know that I'm not perfect, and I don't think there's anybody in this room that would claim to be perfect. And so stuff happens, and it's $4,000. What is the right way forward? And I've thought a lot about that in the time that I've had to look through this. And the thing that struck me that isn't obvious is that if we send a check, which may be the right thing to do, and George has a good point, right? We send a refund. I'm not going to cash that 56 cent check. It's just going to sit somewhere until it's too old and it goes away. The way that we're proposing to do it, we claim it, we put it in the excess taxes collected, that affects how we do things next year. And in fact, it works itself out next year, which means that everybody gets a refund. And so it's about timing. Do we want to put Bob and his staff through the time and effort and the need to carry checks for three years? And do we want to put the state comptroller through that for 56 cents? Or do we want to solve this problem in in a little bit over 12 months where everybody actually gets their money back? Because if we do it the other way, somewhere between $2 and probably $3,000 is actually going to go to the state. And I'm sorry, but I don't want the money to go to the state, right? Because if it goes to the state, what happens? It goes on a list. It goes on a list of of a debt or an asset, excuse me, an asset that is unclaimed. And then I have to fill out a form and claim my thing. But I would have been easier just to deposit the check in the first place, right? So how many people are going to go on there and claim that 56 cent asset at the state comptroller's office of unclaimed assets? Right? It's so much simpler in the world, so much more pragmatic, to just do this in a way where everybody actually gets credit for it, and it's all over in like 16 months. And I don't know why we're all standing here at almost 8 o'clock at night still talking about it.
Thank you.
All right, Roman, you had a question or comment?
I did. I was just thinking, was there a way for us to say, we caused you to overpay, you know, we overcharged you on this amount this year? And whatever the tax rate that we find out is going to be next year, we decrease that by the .0002 dollars that we, I'm just thinking. I have a couple of other things to talk about, but initially.
It's going to adjust automatically. I mean, the debt rate is going to automatically adjust based on what we actually collect. That's that's the natural order of things. And I think that's why we were kind of leaning toward the option one for some of the reasons Mr. Strake spoke to as far as the workload of producing all of that. And then at the end of the day, that money would stay with us and be able to move forward in the debt fund and be able to do the work it was supposed to do. We're going to have to collect it eventually. The debt has to be paid. So whether it's, you know, pay it now, pay it later, and we have to say it like that, but it's going to naturally reduce or, you know, adjust annually based on what we actually collect compared to what we actually owe. So when we turn over our debt obligations each year and turn over our collections each year, then that's how the rate is calculated. So it's going to naturally do that. And that's why this seemed to be the most logical solution, to be the most cost-effective. We're spending citizen tax dollars. I mean, it's not easy to say we made a mistake. I'll tell you that first and foremost. No one likes to do that. And if you've ever had to do it from this side of the podium, it's great. Love to do that. But we want to own it. It's transparency, right? I mean, we, you know, we made a mistake. It's small, but it still has to be corrected. And because it's an ordinance, and because it relates to property tax, we have to correct it. You know, we'll proceed on your direction. But I think at the end of the day, I think it's important for us to know, too, that, you know, we sent out 13,600 statements, give or take, and we haven't had anyone call since October and say, my rate's wrong, or my bill was wrong, or anything like that. And I think that just goes to prove that it is so small. You know, if you have a $200,000 home, it's 20 cents. I've gotten those checks in the mail from people, and I'm the guilty one. And until I sat where I sit now and had to deal with the still date checks on our side, I wouldn't have cashed it either. And now I even tell my kids, cash the check. They'll thank you later, just do it. So, you know, remote deposit, just do it because it's clean and it gets it off the books. And so essentially, that's what we wanted to do at first. But knowing that he's not able by law to hold a credit on a customer account seemed to cause a whole lot of other issues.
Sure. Yeah, and that would have probably been another good alternative.
It would have. It absolutely would have, and that was our preference. But, you know, we've talked to multiple councils from multiple angles and multiple, you know, designations within the tax collection world. And if you were to send an extra dollar on your bill, and it was your error, he could hold the credit. But being an entity error, you didn't ask to pay the extra 20 cents, he can't hold on to it as a credit. But that's the logical solution to me when you're looking at a $500,000 property is essentially a dollar.
Yeah. A little off topic, but, well, not really, but I guess this is also an issue we probably need to take up to the legislature, trying to amend state law to allow this to happen for credits to be held when an entity makes a mistake like this.
I would think there would be a threshold. I mean, that would be, that would be my idea, but, you know.
And I would like to thank you for taking ownership of the error, taking responsibility for that. I do appreciate you saying that you're at the direction of counsel on this, and you'll do, you know, what we want, unfortunately, and this is in you because you don't prepare the agendas, but we, the agenda item that's presented is for one option. I don't see an agenda item presented for the alternative option to be.
In the summary, because I wrote it, there is, there are two options.
There are, but the, I'm just saying that the agenda item that's before us is to adopt an ordinance.
Right.
We don't have a subsequent item to say this is what we want to do instead.
That's correct. And you can certainly, you know, vote not to approve what's in front of you. This was just staff recommendation. That's what we're bringing to you after, you know, the the research that we've done and the homework we've done and the numbers that we've pushed around. And again, we're just trying to make you the best use of citizen money. At the end of the day, it's going to self-adjust. If we go and spend money, we're spending hard dollars, there's no getting that back. This is going to self-correct if we choose to go with this ordinance. If that's not your direction, then we'll certainly go with the second option.
So I want to get to the topic that's been raised by a couple of people, both city and citizens, the authority that we have to do this. Because I also looked at state law, and I'm trying to figure out where it is that we have that authority to issue or take this action and change the tax rate after the fact.
Well, when it, when I first learned of this, of course, I researched it, and there's nothing in state law that specifically applies. So.
To the situation, like a remedy or whatever?
There's no remedy. There's, there's some other remedies, but it didn't apply to our fact scenario. So it's never occurred since I've been here, or since I've been an attorney researching these kinds of issues. And so I did the research, I, you know, kind of developed an opinion in my mind. I asked the attorneys at TML. They they agreed with my assessment. There's nothing on the books on state law as to how to address this or what the remedy is. And so we have an ordinance at the end of the day that can be amended, right? And that's what we're doing. I mean, that's, that's the proposal for you, should you, you know, want to go that that route.
Sure. Okay. And that's what I was going to get, because staff made us aware that city attorney was consulted in the attorney for the tax assessor, and.
I'd just like to be mindful of the time.
And and that TML was.
I guess there's a point of order for allowed a certain amount of time.
Okay. We'll, we'll let Roman finish up here.
Yeah, I'll cut out some things that I don't need to say then. And that we looked with the city attorney, the tax assessor's attorney in TML. And just in my duty as a council member and preparing for this item, we received information from the city attorney and from Mr. Hoppy, and I guess that was in conjunction with you as well. So I also reached out to TML and to the attorney for, unfortunately, I didn't get to the attorney, but to our tax assessor. Something that was surprising to me was TML told me we can't change our tax rate. They said we are prohibited from changing our tax rate after the deadline has passed to adopt it.
Cities do that. I'll let you speak to that, but it does happen.
So last time I asked for extended time, I wasn't granted that. So I just want to bring that up. We're continuing to have a conversation about opinions, and it just sounds like a lot of opinion that's being expressed right now.
I think that's kind of what we're up here to do is give.
Well, I also was up here to request.
Let's, let's finish up, if you will, please.
I will, thank you, sorry. So that's what was surprising. I, I have it in writing from TML, the city can't change the tax rate after the deadline, and we're prohibited from changing it. And because I just asked, you know, has this been done? What's the procedure? I asked the same of our tax assessor, you know, what, what do we, what usually happens here? And surprisingly, from TML, I was told we can't. And so I'm just, that was surprising to me, and I was shocked. I think this is a question that we should be asking, or how did this happen? We got information on that. How can we prevent it from happening in the future? And how are we going to make it right for our citizens? And I don't think we should change the rules after the game's begun and now change the rate to be higher and say, we caused you to pay extra.
Mayor, point of view again, we're just reiterating, this isn't questions.
That's the first time I've said that, council member.
You're about eight minutes in right now, and it's just, last time I asked for extra time, what you said was, I get the same amount of extra time if you get extra time. So mayor, I'm just asking, please be mindful of of the time, and we're just espousing the same opinion in a repeated way, and it's a waste of time. I called a question. I'm going to go ahead and call the question.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we, that we approve ordinance number 2023-05.
Mayor, she can't interrupt me in the middle of discussion to call a question, and that's what she did. So if I can finish.
Are you finished up here?
I have this right here, just saying, you can see it's not long. So all I'm going to say is, if we send a check and refund the citizens the amount that we caused them to overpay, to me, that's us saying, we're sorry, we made a mistake, and here's how we're making it right. And here's how we're taking accountability, and we're trying to make up for it. And I think that's probably the way to go about it. There's a difference of $5,000. We collect 4,000. We have to pay 9,000 to get it done. It's a difference of 5,000. I think it's worth it. I don't think we change the rules after the game's begun, and that's how I'll be voting on principle for the citizens in that way.
Thank you. Mr. Reeves, you have come over to see us. Do you have any words of wisdom that you would like to lay on us?
Yeah, bro.
Please.
Counsel, mayor, Ms. Barron's, Mr. Hayes has pretty well covered what I was going to cover tonight. As your tax assessor-collector, whatever path that you choose, I will be more than happy to follow. As we've estimated the cost that it will come is my hard cost, no time from my staff is included. But if you have any questions of me, I'll be glad to answer them.
Y'all are easier than commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you.
We thank you for being here.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I move to deny warrants number 2023-05.
There's already a motion on the floor, I'm ready.
You're right. We do have a motion on the floor.
You can't, she couldn't read the motion because I have the floor.
Mayor, you're the presiding officer. Is my motion, is my motion on the floor?
Okay. Let's, let's, let's stop all of this. Let's, we're going to start from the beginning, and do we have a?
I would like to move to approve ordinance number 2023-05, and that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.5752, which is effectively a 12.94% increase in the tax rate.
Do we have a second? Second, do we, let's, a vote?
I have a motion.
There's a motion and a second on the floor we need to act on.
Actually, if I have a motion to amend your motion, that's in order. My motion is.
Help me out here, Mike. I'm sorry.
His motion was not a motion to amend. His motion was a motion.
No, I have.
You need to act. You're the presiding officer. It just needs to be clear in your mind on what you all have on the on the floor to to vote on.
All right.
I have a different motion.
All right. We're going to do this.
It is a roll call vote.
Your motion is on the floor. Is there a second to Roman's motion?
I haven't made a motion yet.
I've already made a motion.
You did, sir.
I've already made a motion, and it just, it's been seconded, right?
Right, right. So, no, I'm agreeing with Councilman.
Just a minute. Mike, help me out here.
You have a motion and a second on the floor. My recommendation is you take a roll call vote on that. If that, if that fails, you can go to Mr. Garcia's motion.
But my motion to amend can supersede that right now.
We're, we're, this is what we're going to do.
Okay.
Okay? We've got a motion on the floor. We have a second. We are going to vote on this. If it fails, we will come back to you. If it passes, then we're good.
Okay, so you're going to deny me my right to make a motion to amend.
I am denying you a right to make a. I am denying you a right to make a motion.
Okay, well, I've got that on record.
Okay. All right.
Councilmember Clarkson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hughes?
Yes.
Mayor Eichner?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
No.
Housemember Herring?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one. All right. We are finished with all of our ordinances on first reading. Let's go to 6A.
Ordinance number 2023-01, second reading. An ordinance annexing a tract of land into the corporate limits of the city of Kerrville, Texas, such property making up approximately 4.45 acres and generally located adjacent to and south of Kerrville-Shirner Park, more commonly known as 2511 State Highway 173 Banderas Highway. Such property more specifically described in this ordinance and being located within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of and adjacent to the city limits, adopting a service agreement establishing the zoning for the annexed property as a mixed-use MU zoning district and providing other matters related to the subject. We do not have any citizens to be present on that.
Okay. Do we have anyone to give us any additional information? All right, I believe we can move forward for a motion. Do we have one?
I move to approve ordinance number 2023-01 on second reading, right?
Second reading.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Thank you. 6B.
Ordinance number 2023-02, second reading. An ordinance amending Chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas, by changing the zoning of an approximate 0.63 acre property known as 226 and 228 West Main from a planned development zoning district, PDD, to a light commercial zoning district, C2, and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizens' speakers signed up.
All right, and we have seen this before. Do we have a motion for 6B on second reading? I will move that we adopt ordinance number 2023-02 on second reading.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor? And it passes. Thank you. All right, we are at our last item. We have an appointment to the Recovery Community Coalition. Councilmember Garcia and Herring were the interview team. Do you have a name to bring forth?
We do. We have three, since we have three terms that expire. Do you wanna say anything before? Okay. Excuse me. We have three terms that expire, so I move to appoint, I hope I'm pronouncing this right, Deanna Allen, Caitlin Christopher, and Krista Lovett.
You have a second? We have a second? All in favor?
I would say, thank you for the, letting us have an extra time to determine if people were still interested.
Yeah.
Because it turned out, one of the people we thought was interested was nearly lost. So it was helpful for the extra time. Thank you.
Okay, very good, very good. All right, all in favor of Deanna Allen, Caitlin Christopher, and Krista Lovett, raise your right hand. And it is approved. Is there anything, counsel, for a future agenda?
I do have one. Mayor, I think it was, I really liked your thing of moving us around here. I think doing the same thing, you know, you rearranged our seating here, I think doing the same thing for the citizens is something that we should consider, rearranging the configuration of this room to allow for more seating for the citizens. I would ask that to be a future agenda item for our next meeting.
We have a second for that future agenda item?
It was practical. If we could have some way to know whether it was practical, there's several considerations. And you and I have talked about this before. There's a concern for security, then there's a concern for letting as many people in this room as possible. I think they are having a solution, having people in the lobby. I wouldn't mind seeing some proposals if, if they were possible, but I, I think there's a caveat that we need to consider security and other issues, so. I wouldn't mind having it on the agenda, but I would, I, I say so with a caveat, I'd, I'd like to see that it's practical.
That's fair, yeah.
All right, you agree with that?
Staff would be happy to bring you, again, assessment of building security. We, we touched on that this summer. Certainly, that's top of mind for everyone, and we would be happy to put that on a future agenda for you all to review. We have the capability to do that, as we did before in executive sessions, we could talk about some of those things, that we, we will likely do that in one of your upcoming meetings.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second for that item, and we will put it on the future agenda.
Can I confirm what that is? Because that sounded a little bit different than what I requested. And we'll leave.
Well, I think it's basically bringing us back options. Yes?
Generalized building security.
Let's just see what the options are.
Okay, but that's more building security generalized. I'm talking about the chamber.
Yeah, and the chamber, part of, in my mind, the configuration is dictated right now by security. I think, I think, I think it'll be fun. Let's just try this.
Okay, but does staff understand that's the purpose?
Yes, I think that's what we understand. I think so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we're good. And at 8:11, we are dismissed.